Oh, thank you. So a lot of people. All right, my first request is, is there anybody with a disability or anybody who needs a chair who doesn't have one back there? Anybody? Okay. All right. Let me thank Moshe for that very kind introduction and especially to thank all of yous, it's a phenomenal turnout and we appreciate very much your being here today. And what we're gonna do today is something that is pretty radical in America and that is we're gonna do democracy. How's that?
Yeah!
What we are going to do is discuss the most serious problems facing our country and as Moshe indicated, we're gonna come up with some solutions and at the end of my presentation, I'd like to hear what's on your mind, your comments, your questions. Let me begin by telling you that it is not just the ideas that I'm gonna present to you that will be the most progressive of any of the candidates, but the way we do politics in general. I am a very strong believer in grassroots politics and coalition building. You know what that means? What it means is the understanding that change historically comes about not by a few people on top making a decision or a Supreme Court rendering a decision. Change, real change throughout our history, not only in our country but throughout the world, comes about when billions of ordinary people, working class people, stand up and say, "You know what? Things have got to change." And that is what this campaign is about. Everybody in this room knows that significant change in America came about because workers 100 years ago organized into unions and fought back against the oppression that they were working under. Everybody in this room understands that the civil rights movement did not begin with Martin Luther King Jr. It went on long, long before that. Blacks and whites said, "America cannot be a nation in which African-Americans are second class citizens." And people came together and they fought. Everybody here knows that women fought and sometimes died for the right to vote, the right to make sure that women were not second-class citizens. And most recently, and this is, you know, for the younger people, I think they appreciate this, if we were sitting in this room 10 years ago, not 100 years ago, 10 years ago, and somebody were to say, "A conservative, a very conservative United States Supreme Court would rule that gay couples have a right to marry in every state in this country," nobody would have believed that. How did that come about? It came about because for decades, people struggled and stood up and fought and sometimes were arrested to say that in America, we're not gonna judge people by their sexual orientation. All people are creative. See, the first point that I wanna make is that this campaign is absolutely and positively not about Bernie Sanders. It is about you, your kids, your parents, and all of us. And change, real change, does not take place unless all of us stand together and have the courage to fight the fights that must be fought. Now, let me give you some examples about how we make some change today. These are interesting examples. Three or four years ago, as many of you may recall, virtually every Republican, and unfortunately too many Democrats, were talking about cutting Social Security benefits. Right? You all know that?
Yeah.
Okay. And what happened? All over this country, seniors and their advocates and many of us in Congress said, "Wait a minute. When you got seniors in Vermont and New Hampshire are trying to get by on $12,000 or $13,000 a year, can't afford to heat their homes or buy the medicine they need, you're not gonna cut Social Security? In fact, you are going to expand Social Security benefits." Now, just a few years ago, that was thought to be a radical and wild and crazy idea. It was polled on last week by the Wall Street Journal. By a 61 to 20 percentage, the American people said, "We need to expand Social Security benefits by lifting the cap on taxable income." What's my point? What is my point? Is we have changed that discussion from one in which people wanna cut benefits to expanding benefits because people stood together. Let me give you another example. Three or four years ago, not a very long time ago, the SEIU and other unions said, "You know what? It is totally wrong that workers in America are forced to work for $7.25 an hour because that is a starvation wage." And they started a campaign and they said, "Workers need at least $15 an hour." Three or four years ago, that was thought to be a wild and crazy idea. The bill in the Senate and in the House right now that the Democrats have is 10-10 an hour. Wall Street Journal poll a few days ago, by a 48 to 38 percentage, the American people now believe we should raise the minimum wage to $15 an hour. So my point is, my point is not just to tell you that I believe we should expand Social Security or that I believe we should raise the minimum wage to $15 an hour. That is how change takes place. Change takes place when millions of people get involved, when we have a discussion about the issues, and then it happens and it filters on top. And of course, the most significant example of that is the Supreme Court decision of last week on gay rights. All right? So, let's lay out and have a discussion. What are the most important issues facing America? Is it necessarily what you're gonna see on TV tonight? Probably not. Not gonna be on the front pages of the paper. Let me tell you what I think the most important issues are. For a start, I think that income and wealth inequality is in fact the great moral issue of our time, it is the great economic issue of our time, and it is the great political issue of our time. And what this is about... And what this is about is saying very loudly and clearly, "We will not accept a nation which has more income and wealth inequality than any other major nation on earth. We will not accept living in a country which has more income and wealth inequality than at any time since 1928." And what we are saying is, enough is enough. This country and our government belong to all of us and not just a handful of billionaires. There is something profoundly wrong when in America today, the top 1/10 of 1% owns almost as much wealth as the bottom 90%. Since 1985, there has been a massive redistribution of wealth, which has gone from the middle class and working families to the top 1/10 of 1%. And in my view, that is not sustainable and that most certainly is not what America is supposed to be about and together, we are gonna change that. From a moral perspective, from a moral perspective, I know morality is not often associated with politics in America today, but I think it should be. From a moral perspective, most of us are not comfortable with the reality that we have seen a proliferation of millionaires and billionaires in recent years at the same time as we have the highest rate of childhood poverty of any major country on earth. That is not what this country should be about. There is something profoundly wrong when one family, the Walton family, owns more wealth itself than the bottom 42% of the American people. There is something profoundly wrong, and I want you to hear this, that when in the last two years, the wealthiest 14 people in this country, 14 people, have seen their wealth increase by $157 billion, that increase in wealth in two years is more than is owned by the bottom 130 million Americans. That is not the economy that we want to see. That is a rigged economy that works for the wealthy and the powerful. We want an economy that works for all of our people. This campaign is sending a very simple message to the billionaire class and that is, you can't have it all. We do not accept living in a country today where millions of Americans are working longer hours for lower wages. We do not accept living in a country where people are working at two or three jobs to cobble together an income. We do not accept an economic situation where 99% of all new income is going to the top 1%. That is not what this country is supposed to be about and together, you and I are gonna change that. And our message to the billionaire class is that you're not gonna get tax breaks, send your money to the Cayman Islands and not pay nickel in taxes when children in this country go hungry. And you are not going to continue to send our jobs to China when millions of people in this country are looking for work. The truth of the matter is that to turn this country around, the billionaire class has got to end their greed which is destroying our economy. That's what has to happen. Now, the issue here is not just the grotesque level of income and wealth inequality, that is a huge issue and we've got to deal with it. But the other thing we have to place on the table is the simple reality that for the last 40 years, not five years, not 20 years, but for the last 40 years, despite huge increases in technology and worker productivity, the great American middle class, once the envy of the world, has been disappearing. Today, median family income is almost $5,000 less than it was in 1999. And I know that in my state and here in New Hampshire, we all know, folks who are working multiple jobs, who are working crazy hours just to cobble together an income and perhaps some health insurance. And that is not what this economy should be about. When we talk about jobs, understand this, please. Every month, the government releases statistics and one of the statistics that it releases is official unemployment. Official unemployment is 5.4%. Real unemployment, including those people who have given up looking for work and those people who are working part-time, those millions of people who are working part-time when they wanna work full-time, do you know what real unemployment is? Close to 11%. And here is something that is even more tragic, which we almost never, ever talk about, and that is the tragedy today of youth unemployment. Today, according to a recent study by the Economic Policy Institute, a group that does very, very good work, real youth unemployment in America, including those people, kids who are unemployed, underemployed, or have given up looking for work. If you are a white youngster, aged 17 to 20, and you graduated high school or you dropped out of high school, your unemployment rate is 33%. If you are a Hispanic kid, your unemployment rate is 36%. If you are an African-American kid, your unemployment rate is 51%. Now, if anyone in this room thinks that those numbers do not correlate with the fact that we have more people in jail in America than any other country, you would be sorely mistaken. And it seems to me that it makes a lot more sense to invest in jobs for our young people rather than in incarceration and more and more jails. But the issues out there are not just income and wealth inequality, that's a huge issue. The issue is not unemployment rates which are much, much too high. The issue also, when we talk about our economy and the needs of the middle class, are the fact, is the fact, that millions of our people are working at totally inadequately low wages. In my view, the federal minimum wage today of $7.25 an hour must be regarded as a starvation wage. It must be raised to a living wage of $15 an hour over the next few years. I know some people, sometimes my opponents, say, "You know, Bernie Sanders, he's an extremist." I don't think that it is extreme to say that if a worker works 40 hours a week in America, that person should not be living in poverty. That's not extreme, that's common decency. A few weeks ago, I was in Des Moines, Iowa, and I talked... All right. Obviously, we have somebody from Des Moines, okay. And I was at the farmer's market there and I talked to some people who are associated with the church program. And what that program does at the farmer's market, it collects food that has not been sold during the day and they take it over to an emergency food shelf. What the guy there who's running the program told me is that 90% of the people who go to that emergency food shelf are working people but are not earning the wages they need to provide food for their kids and their family. We need to make sure that when people work in this country, they are earning a wage which allows them to take care of their kids and their family, period. But it's not just raising the minimum wage, that is terribly important. It is also saying loudly and clearly that we will not continue a situation in which women make $0.78 on the dollar compared to men who do the same work. We are going to fight for pay equity, equal pay for equal work. Now, some of you may know, and I know you see a whole lot of Republican candidates for president coming through your beautiful state, so you have the opportunity to hear what they have to say, and some of these guys will be talking about quote-unquote "family values." Let's talk about family values. Now, I've got four kids and I've got seven grandchildren and I've been married for 27 years, so family means a lot to me. Let me describe Republican family values. Republican family values say to the women of this country, "You cannot control your own body." That is not my kind of family value. Unbelievably, Republicans' family value is telling women in America, "You cannot purchase the contraceptives that you need." That is not my kind of family value. Republican family values are saying to same-sex couples, "You can't get married, you can't have equal rights." That is not my kind of family values. But let me tell you the kind of family values that we should be striving for as a nation, because I do believe in family values, just not Republican-type family values. To my mind, the United States must end the international embarrassment of being the only major country on earth, the only one, which does not guarantee workers paid medical and family leave. Now, here's a family value. A woman today gives birth and what an awesome moment that is for her, for her baby, maybe the most important moment of their life. Today, if that woman is lower income or middle class or working class, she may not have enough income and money to stay home with her baby, to bond with her baby, to love her baby in the first days of that baby's life. That is not a family value. What a family value is, is that the United States has got to join the rest of the industrialized world and say to every woman and father in this country that when you have a baby, you will get at least one month of paid family and medical leave. Now, let me mention something that gets talked about very, very rarely. And one of the fun things about running for president is you can raise issues that other people have not talked about. And here's an issue we need a lot of discussion about. In America today, our people, because of the collapsing middle class, are forced to work longer hours than the people of any other major country. You all know that? That's the truth. We work 137 hours more than the Japanese, who are very hard-working people. We work 260 hours a year more than the British, and God bless the French, we work almost 500 hours a year more than the French. Now, here's the point, and this is a serious point, we take it for granted. I go around the country and I meet with a lot of people. And when you look in the eyes of working people in this country, in many cases, people are exhausted, they are stressed out, they are working crazy hours, which is impacting their families and their relationship to their kids. I often tell the story, it occurred to me, happened to me a few years ago. I was outside of a grocery store in Burlington, Vermont, and a woman came up to me and she said, "Bernie, my husband and I have one kid. We would like to have more kids, but I'm working three jobs, he's working two jobs, and we just don't think we can be the parents we would like to be." That story is being repeated all over this country. And what, to add insult to injury, I want you to remember this, do you remember the textbooks that we read as kids which had pictures of workers demonstrating 100 years ago? What were they demanding 100 years ago out on the streets? Anyone know?
40 hours.
40-hour work week. And what these workers were doing is saying, "We are not beasts of burden, we are human beings. We want to have time to spend with our children. We want to have time for education. We want to improve our family life. We want a 40-hour work week." That was 100 years ago. Today, incredibly, despite a huge increase in technology and productivity, 85% of male workers are working more than 40 hours a week, 66% of women workers are working more than 40 hours a week. At the very least, what we must do is guarantee every working family in this country two weeks of paid vacation so people can enjoy their families. That's a family value. Now, when pollsters go out and they call you up and they say, "Hey, what is often most on your mind? What is your major concern?" Do you know what people always say? They say, "Jobs end the economy." That is always issue number one. And the reason for that is that people know that we have millions and millions of people unemployed, that kids can't find jobs. And that is why if we're gonna expand the middle class, if we're gonna turn around the shrinking middle class, we need a major federal jobs program rebuilding our crumbling infrastructure that creates millions of decent pay counts. In Vermont, in my state of Vermont, in New Hampshire, all over this country, our roads, our bridges, our water systems, our wastewater plants, our rail, our levees, our dams, need an enormous amount of work. We should be putting people back to work, rebuilding our crumbling infrastructure. And that's what I intend to do. There's another issue out there which is not a sexy issue, but it is an enormously important issue. And we must understand that 30 or 40 years ago, if a kid graduated high school, that kid could go into a factory, it wasn't great work, it wasn't the best job in the world, but that young person could move up the ladder and earn a middle-class wage, earn decent benefits. 30 years ago, the major employer in America was General Motors, good wages, good benefits, strong union. Today, the major employer in America is Walmart, low wages, minimal benefits, vehemently anti-union. In the last, since 2001, since 2001, in New Hampshire, Vermont, and all over this country, we have lost close to 60,000 factories and millions of decent pay jobs. Now, there are a lot of reasons for that, but one of the major reasons is a disastrous trade policy, policies like NAFTA, CAFTA, permanent normal trade relations with China, which have sent to corporate America, "You can shut down in America, you can throw workers out on the street here, you can go to China, pay people pennies an hour, and bring your products back into this country." The time is now to end these disastrous trade policies. Corporate America's gonna have to start investing in America, not just in China. Now, if we are concerned about jobs and income and wages, if we're concerned about women's rights, gay rights, rights of African-American people, if we're concerned about climate change, there is one overarching issue that every person in this room has got to focus on. And let me be as blunt as I can in telling you what you already know. And that is, as a result of the disastrous Supreme Court decision in the Citizens United case, the American political system has been totally corrupted and the foundations of American democracy are being undermined. What the Supreme Court essentially said to the wealthiest people in this country, they said, "Hey, guys, you already own..." they said, "Hey, guys, you already own much of the economy. Now, we're going to give you the opportunity to own the United States government." And that is precisely what they are in the process of doing right now. In this election cycle, the wealthiest people in this country will spend collectively billions of dollars to elect candidates whose sole function in life is to represent the wealthy and the powerful and to make life difficult for the middle class and working families. Now, I have not made many promises during this campaign, but this is one promise I have made, that when I nominate someone to the United States Supreme Court, that person will in fact have to pass a litmus test. And that litmus test is, they will overturn Citizens United. What we, what we see, and I know the folks in New Hampshire think you have the first primary in the nation. You don't. That primary already took place. It was called the Sheldon Allison Primary. Took place in Nevada a couple of months ago. And what many of the Republican candidates did is went before Sheldon Allison, one of the richest people in this country, multi-billionaire, and they said, "Sheldon, this is what we can do for you. Give us hundreds of millions of dollars." I don't know if we know the results of that primary yet, which particular candidate he will support. But that is where we are today. You have super PACs right now which will be spending more money than the candidates themselves will be spending. You have a situation today with the Koch Brothers, an extreme right-wing family. Second wealthiest family in America will spend close to $1 billion in this election cycle to elect candidates who work for the wealthy and the powerful. That $1 billion is more money than either the Democratic Party will spend or the Republican Party will spend. When you have one family spending more money than either of the major political parties, this is not democracy, this is oligarchy, and we have got to stop it right now. And my view, I believe very much, maybe I'm old-fashioned, but I believe in democracy. And here in New England, we know what democracy is about. It's one person, one vote. You go to town meetings, you argue with your neighbors, you stand up, you raise your hand, that's called democracy. Democracy is not a handful of billionaires buying the United States government. And in my view, if we want a vibrant democracy, not only do we have to overturn the Citizens United, we need to move forward toward public funding of elections so that anybody in this country, regardless of their political views, I want to see. Because I believe in democracy and I believe in an exchange of ideas. I want to see anybody in this country, whether you're conservative or progressive or moderate, whatever you may be, to be able to say, "You know what, I'm going to run for office, but I don't have to beg money from the wealthy and the powerful. I can run for office based on my ideas and not the money that I hustle from rich people." That's the times of office in America. Now, there's been an issue, there's been an issue, I think, which has not been discussed in the way it should be for many, many years, and it's now beginning to get resonance. And that is this. All of us know that we live in a very competitive global economy. And all of us know that if this country is to succeed economically in the future, we need the best educated workforce in the world. And all of us know that it is beyond absurd that today, in America, we have hundreds of thousands of bright, qualified young people who could do well in college, but they can't get to college because their families don't have the necessary funds. Now, that is not only ugly in the sense that it takes away the ladder for these young people to make it to the middle class, but it is totally stupid if we're talking about America having a strong economy in the future. 30 years ago, we led the world with number one in terms of the percentage of our young people who had a college degree. Today, we are in 12th place. And that is why I have introduced legislation and will implement as President of the United States a policy which says that every public college and university in America will be tuition-free. And the importance of that, I want you to appreciate the importance of that because it goes beyond making life easier for young people who are in high school now and want to go to college. What you have in America today is kids in the fifth or sixth grade or even younger than that who understand in their guts that no matter how hard they work, how well they do in school, they're never going to make it to college because their families don't have the money. But when we say to those children all over America that regardless of the income of your family, if you do well in school, if you study hard, if you do your homework, you are going to be able to go to college. That is a revolution that we have got to bring about. And the other part of that equation is not just making public colleges and universities tuition-free, we've got to deal with another horrendous aspect of higher education financing. And that is the absurdity that there are millions of young people and not-so-young people who are struggling under oppressive student debt. There are young people, I just talked to a woman recently, paying 20% of her income in interest rates based on student debt. Talked to a woman in Burlington, Vermont, last year. Her crime in life was that she became a medical doctor and is now doing primary health care for low-income people, exactly what we need all over America. She came out of school $300,000 in debt. Talked to a young woman in Iowa who graduated dental school. We have a dental crisis in America. Millions of people can't find affordable dental care. We need more dentists. She came out of dental school $400,000 in debt. What we have got to do, and what my legislation does, is two things with regard to student debt. Right now, today, if you wanted to refinance your home, and my wife and I did it, you could do it at 2% or 3% interest rates. If you can refinance your home at 2% or 3%, why are millions of people carrying debt at 6%, 8%, 9%, 10% interest rates? They should be allowed to refinance. A few years ago, Obama took a step forward by saying to the banks, "You're not going to make billions of dollars on high-interest rates from low-income and working-class families because of student debt." And he took it into the government. Well, what we have got to say today, not only should banks not be profiteering off of student debt, the government should not be profiteering as well. You know, education is what life is about. And many of us believe that we should continue the learning process till the day we die. That's what life is about. Our job is to respect education, to respect teachers, to do everything that we can to encourage all of our people to get as much education as possible. We should encourage education, not discourage education. And that's why we need to radically change how we fund higher education. A couple of weeks ago, Pope Francis, and I got to tell you, I am a great fan of Pope Francis. If you think anything that I am saying is radical on economics, then ain't nothing. And what this Pope is saying, what he is talking about is not just what he calls the dispossessed. And that means in this country, kids who are hanging down on street corners who don't have the education or the jobs they need. Not just the elderly people in America and around the world who are making horrendous choices about how they survive with not enough money, or the unemployed in general. What he also is talking about, the need for a revolutionary and cultural change. And he talks about the worship of money, the idolatry of money as an evil. And what we have got to learn is that we should not be respecting people because they are billionaires. We should be respecting those people who are teaching our kids, who are treating the sick, who are taking care of our veterans. We have got to change our value system that says, "No, stepping on everybody to get ahead is in fact not what American values should be." What the Pope also did, what the Pope also did a couple of weeks ago is issue, and it's cyclical as you all know, on climate change. And for those of us who understand that the debate regarding climate change is over, the scientific community is virtually unanimous, no longer a debate, that climate change is of course real, that it is already causing devastating problems. Observe what is happening in Karachi, Pakistan, a terrible heat wave killing thousands. Observe what is happening in California, USA, where they have a terrible drought and are changing how they deal with water. This is going on all over the world. And what the scientific community tells us is that we have a short window of opportunity, that it's not too late. That if we transform our energy system away from fossil fuel to energy efficiency, to such sustainable energies as wind, solar, geothermal, and others, we can in fact leave this planet to our kids and our grandchildren in a way that is habitable. And that is exactly what we have to do. So to my mind, what the scientists are also telling us is that we do have a small window of opportunity to turn this thing around. But if we do not move and move extremely aggressively, what they are predicting is that by the end of this century, the planet Earth will be 5 to 10 degrees Fahrenheit warmer. And what that will mean for our grandchildren, it will mean more drought, it will mean more floods, it will mean more extreme weather disturbances, it will mean more acidification of the ocean, it will mean more rising sea levels. And what the CIA and Department of Defense tell us is that in a world where there are scarce natural resources, where people are going to have to fight for water and for land that they can grow their crops on, there are real threats to international, national security. And you're going to see people warring, going to war over water and going over, going to war for land that they can grow their crops on. We have the opportunity in this great nation to lead the world in transforming our energy system. We can solve this problem alone. It is obviously a global problem. But think what America looks like when we are leading the world, working with China, working with India, working with Russia. And think about what the world looks like when in fact we leave to our kids and grandchildren a planet that is habitable, and that is exactly what we should be doing. As perhaps the most progressive member of the United States Senate, I, I am used to being attacked by the big-money interests. It happens every day, and I'm used to it. It doesn't bother me. In fact, I was thinking, um, back to 1936. I don't know if any of you are familiar with this. In 1936, in the middle of the terrible, terrible depression, millions of people are unemployed. And Franklin D. Roosevelt comes into office in 1932. He develops a whole bunch of programs designed to help working families create jobs. And he's vigorously opposed in every step that he makes by what he called the economic royalists, what we would call the billionaire class today. They hated his guts. And what he said in his 1936 speech where he accepted the Democratic nomination, he,